Materials on the face and the Steinway section six. Do we have any, Nick, do we have any work sessions planned for?
All right, that was Kathy. Kathy, I just put you on mute.
Peter, we don't have any work sessions scheduled for the work session. And I think that was a good time to remind people, if you are not talking, please keep your microphone muted.
And I'll let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded and will be provided on the Town Hall webpage.
Thank you very much. And we, the minutes were distributed. And I'd like you to do a roll call because I can't see everybody with your name. Nick, would you send Joe Muller an invite, please? On a text.
Yes, will do.
Thank you.
We have Doug, Jamie, Kathy. Uh, let's see, Steve Schroeder.
Joe will be on shortly. He's just looking for his link. Okay, um, may I have a motion to approve the minutes submitted? And they were, they were corrected, they were revised.
I'll make the motion, Peter.
Thank you.
I'll second. Steve?
Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Doug, aye.
Steve, aye.
Kathy, aye.
Go text your text, you'll get a link. Okay, first item was the Britton Field. Like, we've discussed this at some length, but not all the board members were present. So I'd like to have the applicant, who's going to represent? Britton Field Parkway Laboratory.
Hello, my name is Brody Smith. I'm an attorney of Bonnechannick and King. I'm here representing Britton Field. I also have Dave Aiello, who is the construction manager. And my client, Vincent Durante, who is the principal of the property owner.
Okay, so Brody, if you could just summarize for everybody just where we are with this. And also, if somebody else wants to talk about the material and where it's going to be, where it proposed, replaced the material. And I know that it was sent around, thank you very much, whoever did that. So we, we got a chance to look at that. And, but I wanted all of the board members that weren't able to look at it during a work session to have a look at it tonight. Make a final decision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal to amend the existing site plan to the board. This site plan was approved in September of 2019. It involves the redevelopment of an existing building on Britton Field. It was previously the DigSafe building. As you may recall, DigSafe built a much larger building to the west of this building. And that frees up this building for development. The ultimate use for the building will be as a laboratory in connection with Hanford Pharmaceuticals operations in the region. The original approval and the original elevations included three different types of metal panels of different colors as part of the approval. Through the course of the, the development of the building, it became evident that the use of metal on all those surfaces would make the project prohibitively expensive. So the applicant sought alternatives that may be acceptable to the town, including the use of EFS on some of the surfaces initially proposed in EFS with the finish that appeared to be metal. And there was some correspondence back and forth with planning staff through the spring, until it became evident that that was not a solution that was attractive to the town. So in order to bring the, this process to a conclusion, we sort of backed off from that original EFS proposal with, you know, most of the building being clad in EFS that had a metal finish. And presented this, which we view, we think to be a reasonable compromise proposal. And that's what you see on the screen. And what you see on the screen is a building with the areas that are blue, that that's one metal type that would have a metal cladding also. You see the Mission Red area, that's another metal cladding. And on the top of the screen, on the left, that's the east elevation. That is the elevation that faces Britton Field. And to the right of that, you see the south elevation. That is essentially the front door that faces the parking lot. What we're asking for is the ability to substitute part of the west and north elevation, what appears gray on the screen. And I thank you, Nick, if you're the one with the hand, I appreciate that showing where we're talking about, or Emily. The, the two gray areas, that's really what we're here talking about. We'd like to put EFS in there, and that's essentially the back of the building. The west elevation faces the new DigSafe building. It doesn't face any street and isn't evident from any public, public location. The north elevation faces 298, but is screened by, it's eight, I believe it's eight trees. And those, those trees make that part of the facade not visible from the road. So by allowing some EFS on the, essentially the back of the building, it would help quite a bit in lowering construction costs. And we don't, do not believe it would reduce the attractiveness of, of the building. It would still very much appear to be, you know, as the original approvals had it. And I think that, you know, the key fact is we've, you know, we've sought to compromise here and listen to the input that we got from planning staff about keeping the south and east elevation all metal clad. I'll stop there and I'm going to turn this over to David. Did I, did I accurately characterize that or anything you'd like to add?
No, I think you, I think that sums it up.
And then lastly, I'd just like to invite Mr. Durante to just give you a little bit more on, on the, the purpose of the building. And we'll try to be brief, but we want you to understand what this building will be used for and, you know, our desire to make it as best as it can be.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of months back, we did an acquisition of Hanford Pharmaceuticals in Syracuse. The, what, Hanford manufactures a number of antibiotics, penicillin products, some of them for the dairy industry, which certainly help out the New York, the upstate New York area. The laboratory at the current facility at, at O'Nider Street is antiquated and is getting to the point where it probably can't pass an FDA inspection anymore. So what we, what we decided to do is take the laboratory facilities offsite and acquire this building. Right now, we're putting about $5 million between purchase price and improvements into the site. It's going to be state of the art. We have some plans in the future that we'll be doing other, other than supporting our own manufacturing needs, we'll probably be reaching out to other areas within the greater Syracuse area to do the laboratory work as well. This could help farmers test their milk, et cetera. So again, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm suffering from hay fever, it's been driving me nuts. But anyway, just to make a long story short, in, in Syracuse, we currently employ about 140 people at the Hanford facility. We also own another site jointly with a company in Italy called Steri Pharma, which is on Southwest Street in Syracuse. That particular facility is a state of the art sterile manufacturing facility that makes one product for Merck called Zabraxor. It's a high-end antibiotic that's been actually used quite a bit in this whole COVID crisis for people with respiratory infections. We also have another site in Hamilton, New York, where we make Quartermaster, which is a penicillin, dihydrostriptomycin-based mastitis product to treat mastitis, mastitis in dairy cows. We just, Dave Aiello could, could mention this as well. We just signed a lease to take over a 28,000 square foot warehouse facility in Liverpool, New York. Our veterinary business is going to, that's going to become the headquarters for our veterinary business, which is called US Vet. We'll probably employ another 20 people at that side as well. So we're a New Jersey company that has made a significant commitment to upstate New York, the greater Syracuse area. We've, we've done business there for many years, going back to like the early eighties. Then, if you, if you see the sites that we've been involved in, we build everything state of the art. Again, we're not, you know, holding back any expenses in this site. But again, my thoughts are is that this building, once it's completed, will probably really stand out in, in that area in East Syracuse to Witten. It's going to be a beautiful facility. We'd like to be good neighbors. We just want to get this project done. I really want to try to get this laboratory up and running within the next couple of months because we have about a nine to 12 month process to validate all the equipment within the facility and get it approved by FDA. And again, because we're in the pharmaceutical industry, you know, this is something the government comes in and expects usually annually. So, you know, we're in a business that you really can't cut any corners. Everything has to be perfect in order to keep the government happy and keep our products on the market. I think that's all I can say. If you want me to add anything more?
No, no, I, I don't think any of us, we're really here to focus on the outside material for what was approved and what.
I just need a name. I didn't get the name, I'm sorry.
Oh, my name? It's Vincent Durante.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vincent. So we're not questioning the importance or the economic impact that you're providing. We welcome it. We're just, we had an approval on with a metal coating and it was changed. And we're now going to, now we have all of the board, you've provided all of the information. And I'm going to poll the board as to whether they're willing to make the compromise that you've proposed. Kathy, are you there? Kathy, can you unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can now.
Okay, sorry about that. I really don't have a problem with it with the location it's going. I just want to make sure that we're aware of this material because it's a little different than what we're used to and that it's going to hold up. That's, that's my main concern.
Before we get too much further, Emily, will you show the street view from Bridgeport? Because my understanding, at least from the elevations that we're seeing, that, that kind of north elevation, you're, you will see from the road.
So that's correct. It's just screened by those trees. That's what I was trying to make.
And when, but when you add the second floor, that's what we're looking at, right? Okay, sorry to interrupt, Peter.
No, no.
Nathan, I got. That's okay. You know, the, the, so that portion is very evident from Bridgeport where we're seeing now. But that's the part that doesn't, that wouldn't have the EFS. Remember, on the north elevation, it's only part of the building. It's only that back corner closest to the DigSafe building.
Right.
And it's not going to be taller than this street.
Yeah. Nathan, why don't you carry on then? Is that, are you satisfied with this for non precedent setting? Approval with the conditions of?
I mean, it's an, it's an EFS product. We're typically not really, typically approve the EFS product. You know, I think it tends to wear very easily. It's a lot of upkeep and when it starts to look rundown, it, it really looks rundown.
I tend to disagree with that, Nathan. We've had, working at Syracuse University, we had a similar problem with our Center for Science and Technology. And the whole south side of that building was finished in EFS. And that's close to 30 years old. And I think it's been repainted, but it looks pretty good. We also had it on Manly Fieldhouse, where I will admit it didn't hold up to lacrosse balls.
Syracuse lacrosse balls.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Steve. So Nathan, just tell us how you feel. We're just going to vote and whatever is what it is.
I mean, I wouldn't typically be on board with it. I mean, I've never seen this reflective version of drive it. You know, has it got like kind of a mica finish to it? Is that?
So there's sort of two, we're really presenting two options here. The, the drawing has limestone finish. We can, if it's important to have that reflective finish, we can, we can, we can put that reflective finish on. Let me pause and let Mr. Aiello describe that exactly what it is and how that affects durability.
Well, I guess which finish are you proposing here?
So the, the outsoleation, two tabs over from where we're looking here, that's, that's the, that's what's drawn. And we can provide a reflective, essentially, you know, finish on top of that, if it's the desire of the board. That was something that was discussed in the work session. So we added these additional, draw, you know, these additional material information to put that forward and we.
I'm just trying to understand exactly what you're proposing here. I mean, I understand the isolation aspect. What is the color and finish that you're proposing?
Reflective is kind of wasted on the back of the building. But if it's, you know, if it gets us across the finish line and the board feels strongly, they want it to have this reflective looking finish. I mean, that's fine. That's better than, we think that's, that's better than the, than the metal finish. Honestly, we, we do think this material will be more durable than the metal panels in a lot of ways. If you think about like upstate, you see the metal panels next to this metal, this more reflected finish EFS. And the metal panels are oil canning and the EFS is in great shape.
Just, if you want the reflective or prefer, just let me know how you feel. I don't, we've been talking about this for a while and we just need to vote.
So I think. Just to answer your question, Nathan, too, I think the, so what's existing on the proposal is a, is the isolation plus the limestone finish. Something that you're typical to see like across the street at Liberty Mutual. They have that on their entry. So that, that's what's proposed now. The, the reflective is originally what we proposed in, in replacement of the metal panels around the entire building, which is the same exact product. However, the, the top coating is, is made to mimic a metal panel. So both have the, the same durability. And I think this is going to hold up very well comparative, I think, to the metal panels. We've seen in the back on DigSafe that, that's a great facility, very nice, an awesome job over there. It's only been a couple of years in and you can already see the panel starting to buck one way. So with, with the reflect, we thought it was a better system in a lot of different ways that mimicked the metal. But right now, we've got the limestone finish, which we feel is, is a good two-tone effect on the building as well.
Okay. You can proceed, Peter.
Pardon?
You can proceed.
Are you, well, what's your, are you?
I think in the end, if the intent is that this product is going to mimic the metal panel, the one that we originally improved and it is going to look similar, sure, I'm on board.
Okay, so that's reflective. Steve, are you agreeing with the reflective EFS?
Sorry, Steve, I muted you. There was a little feedback earlier. You'll need to unmute.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm, I'm all right with that.
Thanks, Steve. Kathy, you are okay in the reflective as a step above in my mind?
Yes, definitely, Peter.
Yeah. Joe, are you on now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
You're good with it? And I'm good with it. Is there, do we have Leif or, or Doug? No, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm here. I am good with the EFS product. Although I did have a question, there was a rendering, I thought I saw on Tuesday morning, that's, was reflecting more of a, of a score pattern on the EFS that mimicked or was similar to a metal panel. And I'm, I'm not sure if that's what's being proposed now, or if we're just talking about kind of a plain Jane vanilla grid on the back in this kind of reflective metal. And I, I also would prefer to see the reflective kind of metal finishes as part of this package. So can we clarify, what is the, what is the reveal pattern that's being proposed?
So if you click over to the outsoleation, PDF there, on top there. Right, one right to the left of where we're open right now. So the reveal that we have is the one that you see on top there. So you'll have a V groove and then you'll have basically a metal, a metal looking finish over the, the entire face of that. So what was original?
What's the pattern?
What you see is the joint pattern on the, yep, if you can click that one. What you see is the joint pattern on the back there. That's the, the grid layout that we would have. So the original kind of thought back in, you know, March and April was that we would do, yep. So that we would do the reflective, as you see the joint layouts here, and change out the metal panels to the reflected on these, these metal panel locations. We'd have the same joint layout, we'd have the same sheen and the same exact lab color match. So we would switch the, this product, which would give us, you know, obviously a different material with the same overall look and joint layout.
So, so this in the EFS with the reflective panel is the second option we're talking about, correct?
No, metal on the other two. The other two have a metal coating. The other two sides have a metal coating, Doug.
Yeah, originally we.
What Emily has on the screen right now is the pattern that's going to be shown in the EFS. Correct? So it's, it looks to be probably like, you know, eight by 12 grooves on the back of the building.
Right. And then this was what was originally proposed.
Yeah, so I, I would, I'd like to see it, you know, mimicking a little bit more on the metal panel, the vertical orientation and a little bit tighter reveals for the proportions and then I'm all set.
Okay.
What are we calling this option with the vertical grooves?
What you, what's on the screen now is the original approved site plan.
This is what we approved originally.
In September, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And you mimic that with the reflective EFS?
Well, so no, what we, what we proposed here is that one that, that just is on the screen now that Emily just put up. That's, that's the proposed amendment. Yeah.
And what I'm also noticing, there's a change in that kind of brick red metal panel as well.
The colors, the colors are pretty consistent. Is it called a Mission Red?
Color, but if you look at this one, you got large, large panels of red versus the smaller stacked brick look of the red in the.
Yeah, I think what we proposed here is the tighter joints to try to eliminate some of that oil canning and also to kind of mimic the, the building surrounding. So in the back, we've got the DigSafe building that, that also has the linear panels like we show here. So the larger metal panels, what we found through the process, have a much, a much greater certainty of bending at the joints being that there's more material there.
Right.
So we did, you know, to try to limit that, that was our, that was one of the driving factors of trying to go with the CFS product is we wanted to avoid that after spending, you know, so much money on the finish that we weren't going to have something that, you know, two, three years down the road kind of didn't look as, as good as it did day one. So, you know, to try to.
The brick color that's on there, is that metal or EFS?
This is metal.
That's metal, okay.
All the red and the blue.
Smaller, smaller pattern.
Yeah, I think this was, once we started seeing a lot of these places oil canning, like, like even up at, at SU, the buildings that are kind of facing, you know, 81 as you're, you're passing the carrier down there. Once you start seeing some of these like waves in the, the panels, it just gets concerning with these newer projects. And, you know, what we found was the, the tighter the, the joints are, the less prevalent that can be. So what we're trying to do is just to limit, I mean, it's a major investment. We're just trying to, you know, get the most out of it longevity wise.
So you have small metal panels and large scored EFS expanses.
Yeah, which I think the architect was, was going for kind of a two-tone effect here. And, you know, I have, no, I'm not an architect by any means, but that's what, what they've come up with and, and trying to marry the two.
Doug, are you satisfied?
Yes, repeating my, repeating my point is I'm trying to unify the facade. So I understand the two-tone, but I would like to see it more unified. And I think that can be accomplished with the EFS value engineered option they're presenting with the reflective coating.
Okay. Does everyone else agree with that?
Yes.
Kathy, yes.
All right.
I defer to the architect, oh yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm going to make a motion and I'm going to, because part of this motion is going to have this, we're going to need to word this very precisely. The motion to approve the change in materials is presented by the applicant as follows. Would one of the architects like to give me that language, please? That the two sides would be metal and the other two sides would be reflective panels as shown?
So I think, I think what we're looking at is the gray color shown on the proposed drawings to be the drive it with the reflective metal coating.
Yep.
In a tighter pattern or reveal pattern than shown to mimic the original design.
Okay. And so add that, Jamie, and then with the condition that the mockup of.
It was just, which facade is it? It's only one side, I heard. Southeast, west.
North and west.
North and west.
Thank you.
And with the condition that a mockup of the specs be presented to the Department of Planning, zoning and the planning board consultant for the final approval, except as modified here in all of the findings and conditions on the site plan approval date. Whatever it is, I can't.
September 26, 2019.
Okay.
And this is Brody Smith speaking. I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt. If, if I could be heard, I, I just wanted to ask a question for clarity. So I just want to give Mr. Aiello a chance to speak. Since we're changing the, the size of the reveals, do you know, Dave, is that from a material point of view, is that possible? Can we get that material and those smaller reveals that are being asked for?
I mean, I think anything's possible. I think by the time we kind of go to that length, I'm not sure if there's really any economic savings there. But we can certainly look into that.
Okay, well, that's going to be the motion. You do, I appreciate that. But you'll have the opportunity, the staff and, and our consultant. That's the motion and somebody moved it. I moved it. May somebody second it?
I'll second. Steve?
All in favor?
Nathan, aye. Joe, aye.
Steve, aye.
Doug, aye.
Peter, aye. All right, thank you. Taco Bell.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So I think we, I defer to Emily or Nick. Are we, we reached the finish line with these latest drawings?
Um, so we did get updated plans and this did address one of the conditions we had earlier about changing from stone mulch to a bark mulch for the landscape plan. And then the new plans that were provided were for citing, for signage and lighting. All of the lighting comments were addressed. This would have been about the spill, the max average and the pole heights. So those have all been brought up to code. The only outstanding thing. The only outstanding things I might mention is in the latest application, they noted that the number for the building would be added to the monument sign, but it is not shown on the plan of that sign. And-
The motion.
What was going to be added?
A, the address. They- They're gonna put an address in this monument in the, in the base. And then the only other item that I saw was that they don't have, we typically have an outline for the signage on the building that shows the, the band. And while that's in the details, it's not shown on the elevation.
But it is in the detail.
I think it's okay if it's in the detail. These purposes.
Okay. Thank you, so we're, we're, we're set. I'm making a motion to approve the lighting signage plan as presented as modification of site plan approval for the board dated, Nick?
July 9, 2020.
July 9, 20, except as modified herein.
Peter, hold on one sec, I got a question, sorry. Are we showing signage on three sides here?
Yeah, but they're different. Yes, we, we approve that on the- Okay?
They have those CBA variants for that.
Great, thank you.
Uh, and then the, the, the address will be added to the sign. And then the, except as modified herein all other findings and conditions as I planned approved dated July 9, 2020 are in full force and effect. That's the motion, may I have a second?
I'll second, Peter, Kathy.
Thank you. All in favor?
Nathan, aye.
Steve, aye.
Kathy, aye.
Doug, aye.
I heard Joe, aye, and Peter, aye, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate the help, have a good night.
Yeah.
Who was here for Taco Bell, please?
Mike McCracken.
Thank you.
And Steve Wilson from Bowler.
Thank you, Mike and Steve, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alpha grading and filling permit. Before I do that, Nick, is the enterprise off? Is that what I heard?
Correct, the enterprise team withdrew their application for the patio modification to the site.
Mention to the group why?
They were proposing this to allow for a seating area for their staff at the Enterprise 3 building along Wide Waters Parkway. It has been withdrawn due to time constraints, they are not, they cannot feasibly do this with their construction season.
Okay. All right, so now we have the alpha, do we have, is that in, Rich on the, on the meeting?
I'm on, Peter.
Thank you.
Hey, Peter, it's Richard Russel.
Okay.
Good evening.
All right.
Mr. Russelli and whom?
Ed.
And Ed.
Ed, thank you.
I think we, we, we've had this around enough times, we have the, a resolution that's been submitted and I hope you've all reviewed it, but I think because of the importance, I want to read it. Do you recommend I also read the conditions of this, Jamie?
I, I think so, yes.
Okay.
And I know there's one condition that we just needed to discuss, number four.
Yes, we'll do that, we, we, we'll get to that, let me get to the Alpha Grading and Filling Permit Resolution, so August 13, 2020. Motion to approve the site plan herein for grading and filling with the following findings and conclusions and conditions. Prior to application herein, the applicant had presented an application to the board for a plan approval for uses and improvements to the project site, which is 127.35 acre reclaimed quarry, which is in a high-tech zoning district in the town. However, that application was withdrawn, so the application herein is for planning board site plan approval in connection with a quote grading and filling unquote permit only as required by the Town of Dewitt Code. On June 11, 2020, this board declared this action Type 1 action for Seeker and declared itself lead agency and sent the required notices to interested and involved agencies. More than 30 days have passed since the notice of lead agency were sent and there have been no responses or objections thereto. This board has reviewed the FBAF of the applicant submitted with the application and the part of the, two of the FBAF and finds that as to the grading and filling activities herein and provided, all conditions of this approval are complied with, this board issues a negative CCor declaration for the project finding no significant adverse environmental impacts by reason of the grading and filling permit. This board further finds that due to the unique nature of this site and the grading and filling permit being specific and limited, the reviews pursuant to Seeker as to the grading and filling permit only is not segmentation under Seeker and is specific to this action. Accordingly, the negative Seeker declaration herein is not construed as being applicable to any other action, project, future construction or improvements that may be requested or required on this property this board has reviewed. The Anadag County Planning Board referrals of July 1, 2020 and has accepted the modifications therein relating to the applicant being required to comply with the requirements of the DOT and that is a condition of this approval. This board and the applicant apparently agree that this property must undergo significant grading and filling and potentially prepare the site for any future development that would be in accordance with the high-tech district of the town. Appropriate redevelopment of this ultimate, is the ultimate goal. Accordingly, significant deliberation and discussion with the applicant, the DEC, the town of, towns consultants and the planning board have been had to assure that only fill in materials appropriate to the goal of redevelopment are utilized. This board takes no position as to any private covenants which may affect this approval or conditions therein. This condition herein also has taken into account the proximity of the project to the residential neighbors. In addition to any findings and conditions above the following conditions of this approval to which this applicant has agreed. Acceptable fill materials shall be materials imported for use to fill shall be in accordance with the definition of fill materials, general fill, Part 4 of the grade adjustment. This discretion letter of Part 360 series regulations dated September 19, 2019. Attached here too, no other materials are permitted, there shall be no processing of fill materials other than materials as stated above at this property. The permitted action herein is within the jurisdiction of the Town of Dewitt grading and filling permit, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in any DEC permit or otherwise. The applicant is prohibited from running any operation involves processing or recycling solid waste or accepting any solid waste. Demolition, two demolition continue on the remains of concrete structure at south end of site provision, provide erosion control measures is required to perform this work. Area filled placed adjacent to the concrete structure shall be stabilized with a seating lawn upon completion of the demolition activities. Demolition, the structure shall occur fall 2020, winter 2021 and, and full site stabilization should be completed by spring 2021. Three is summary of report filing, filling activities including origin and cubic yard shall be submitted to the Department of Planning and Zoning. Four, this is, materials should be compacted. The question is, this is now offline, how frequently and and how much fill, so is there, does our consultant want to recommend a, a language for this that would be acceptable to the applicant? Materials should be compacted, how often? And at what depth?
So-
We wanted to, we, I think it, we would be open to graded, rolled and compacted. I don't know if there's a depth that we want to assign to it.
How do we know on what lifts you'll be compacting? What dimension lifts?
Well, we can I'm not sure how we'll, I mean, it would be, I think we wanted to leave it graded, rolled and compacted per generally accepted standards. I don't know, what are those generally accepted standards? Well-
Well, there, there's no way you're gonna ever define that Nathan, because, I mean, you're hauling, you could be hauling gravel in, you could be hauling clay in. There's no way of, no way of doing any compaction tests, because you don't have a proctor of any of the material, the material's gonna vary.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily a proctor or test, but are we saying, you know, in, you know, should be rolled and graded in two foot lifts? Five foot lifts?
Well, I think it would be behoof of them anyway to do something, because otherwise they wouldn't be able to back trucks over it when they did fill it, so.
Right, I know, but we're trying to define what the general practice is, you know, so that it's not done in 12 or 15 foot lifts.
Well, it, it won't be done in 12, I, I would say if we were gonna, you could say three to five foot lifts, that's about, I don't think you can define one down to the foot, but I think we could work within a range.
Is that acceptable to the board?
That would be fine with me.
This is Doug, I, I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, I think the standard though that we're really talking about is, is the description in the resolution that says suitable for future development. And I think it's just important to say, and I'm not objecting to this project, but I think it's important to say that this fill really doesn't make this site buildable or very difficult to build on in a high-tech district, the way, the way that this is being presented. So as long as that's clear to the board, and I know the applicant has probably pondered this question too, but I think that's the reality of, of this, so I don't really have an opinion on, on specifics of the lifts and compaction.
Well, it'll be up to, you know, the value will be dependent upon how well this compaction works and whether it becomes a recreation feature.
We, we could agree with that.
Okay.
I think any future developer's gotta, gotta do his own soil test and he'll have to worry about, about that, I mean, it's-
Agreed.
We are not preparing this site for any specific construction.
Right.
Okay, let's, materials shall be compacted and graded in three to five foot lifts, is that the correct terminology? By generally accepted-
Yeah, yeah, I would be seeing, getting general in, generally in three to five foot lifts.
Yeah, okay. All right, number five, no dumping, delivery or construction shall commence prior to 7:00 AM or later than 7:30 PM. Six, access road shall be continually maintained from ruts and potholes and shall be cleaned and swept periodically or at the request of the code enforcement officer if it determine the road is not being maintained. Seven, number one, Phase 1 shall be modified to include the entire stormwater management area along the northern, northeastern portion of the filling area adjacent to the evergreen buffer. After achieving the finished elevation in accordance with the approved grading plan, the area must be top dressed with six inches of screed topsoil and seeded with low-mold metal or wildflower seed mix. No other phases shall commence until Phase 1 is completed. Eight, a grading and filling permit shall be issued for a period not to exceed four years from the date of issuance. If the project is not completed, then the allowable four years under permit must be applied, applied for under the same conditions of the planning board approval dated, that would be today, is that accurate? August 13, 2020? Jamie? Except however, any subsequent permit will be issued annually. Except for the grading and filling permitted by this resolution, any other activity or action of development on the site is not approved and will require further site plan approval permits or actions as may be required on the Town of Dewitt Code. Additionally, this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, quote site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for the client to issue any proposed changes, additions, deletions, scope of work, materials from the site plan document not approved and are not subject to further and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the Town of Dewitt Code, Section 192-122. That's the motion, may I have a second, please?
I'll second, Nathan.
Nathan, all in favor?
Can we have some discussion, please?
Sure.
I'm still not in favor of this timeframe, I think it's a long time for these neighbors to be bothered, you know, it's gonna be 13 hours a day. That, that's a long time. And I think SACPA agreed with me.
What's, what is the town ordinance, what's the town ordinance?
Well, that town ordinance is for construction.
Yeah, well, Steve, I gotta say, this, this is Andy, I mean, this, this site's been operating as a mine and a cement plant for the better part of probably five to six decades. Most recently, it's been under-
I think people are tired of it, Andy.
I understand that, but I, you're, you're kind of, you're restricting these guys to, I mean, they're not gonna go out and buy fill, this, this only comes when they have projects available, it may be shorter. You know, originally they were requesting five years and I, I requested to put this at four.
You're talking about the hours, Steve?
Yes. You're talking 7:00 AM to 7:30 PM or the duration of four years, Steve?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm talking about the hours.
I apologize, I misunderstood.
Okay, that's okay, we read that one, so now the hours, what is the town ordinance?
That is the ordinance.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I, I, I'm comfortable with that, anybody else want to weigh in?
I thought Mark mentioned the other day that the DEC ordinance restricted just to daylight hours, which may differ from hours. Is that correct?
Well, in, in the summertime, that can be even longer.
Right, but it could be 4:00 PM in the winter.
Which one, whichever restrictive.
I think the 7:00 to 7:30.
We, we do have, we did say it had to be in accordance with those DEC regulations, I believe. I think there's a guest on that has a question.
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, can we say, yeah, per DEC regulations, but no later than 7:30? I mean, I agree with the fact that, you know, it could be 10 o'clock at night, but, you know, per our town, we don't allow anything past 7:30.
I, I, I agree with that.
So there's an Ann Donahue who has a, a raised hand, I don't know, Ann, you're on mute if you had a question?
She was asking, is anyone from the town gonna monitor what they're dumping?
Not daily, but yes, we will be getting their reports, excuse me, reports.
I believe we said it was twice a year.
Reviewing the reports, yeah.
I mean, Andy's, Andy's gonna be getting a SWIP report and that usually has a, a whole host of photos, so, and you're getting that weekly.
Yeah.
And if there are five acres, it's probably twice a week, right? So, I mean, you can, e- even if you require more photos on the SWIP inspection, which is I guess entirely up there to our code enforcement office, they can, you know, they can see what's going on or kind of monitor it that way, you know?
Good point, thanks Joe. Steve, are you comfortable with the, with the, you raised a question, are you comfortable now with the new language?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Okay, so you, what's your?
Well, the language that I have right now, no dumping, delivery or construction shall commence up prior to 7:00 AM or later than 7:00 PM or according to DEC regulations, if shorter timeframes.
Correct. Okay.
Ann had a follow-up question of, is the DEC going to be testing the soil? I don't believe so, but I, I-
Yeah.
Not, not in relation to this filling project, and I'm sure at some future development that, that'll be part of their phased environmental process.
But we also have in our, in our language there that, you know, the filling, the fill material is- is clean fill. It is gravel and other materials that are acceptable by DEC standards for clean fill.
Correct. So by by law, they, you can have that. Steve, then is your vote a no or is it?
Yes, I'm voting no.
Okay. Nathan?
Aye.
Yes. Joe?
Yes. Yes, Joe.
Kathy?
Yes, Kathy.
Okay. Doug?
Doug, yes.
And Peter, yes. And Peter, yes. All right. So it carries, that's five to one or six to one? Jamie, you got the tally.
I have it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, improved. And thank you all. Thank you for everybody's patience and forbearance in having this completed. Consultants, Andy, Rich and Ed, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, this is Richard Roselli. Peter, thank you for taking the lead and answering difficult questions and having this be a successful project for the town and for Roselli. Thank you very much.
No, you know, it's, this is unusual one, but we we worked through it. So thank you all. We will, there's no other business to be conducted. Jamie?
Yeah, thank you.
Andy? Then I make a motion at seven fifty-two to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second, Peter.
Doug, aye.
Aye, Nathan, aye.
Steve, aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Kathy, aye.
Thanks, Kathy. Peter, aye. Doug?
I'm almost done. Aye.
All right.
Good night.
Well done.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Good night.
Be sure to, be sure to cancel to.